Welcome to tonight's Muskogee Municipal Authority Meeting for this June 27, 2022. Before we get into tonight's agenda items, we will have our invocation by Councilor Tracy McGee followed by the pledge of allegiance if you're staying.
Let us bow our hearts for a moment of prayer. O gracious Father Yahweh, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your grace and your mercy. Father, we ask you that you guide our hearts and minds as we take on the business of the city. We ask all these blessings in your only regarded Son, Yahshua, let us say hallelujah.
Hallelujah. Salute. Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Mayor Marlin Coleman, Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Ivory Van.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Alex Reynolds.
Here.
Stephanie Jones.
Here.
Tracy McGee.
Here.
Tracy Hoos.
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes. Item number one passes. Item number two, please.
Consider approval to authorize the city manager or his designee to negotiate and execute a contract between the City of Muskogee and Cook Consulting LLC for Muskogee Water System Maintenance in an amount not to exceed $325,000 or take other necessary action.
Mr. Stewart.
Yes, Deputy Mayor and Council. This contract is one that we've had going now for a couple of years. This is one, if you'll remember back, where we were having such a big issue with the water leaks and the amount that we had, and then also the fact that we were having to go out in the middle of the night and spend most of the night with our water distribution department fixing these repairs, and it was really kind of draining us, and it's like we weren't getting anywhere with it. So we decided to put it out for a contract for emergency repairs and also so that this contractor would do the emergency repairs at night. And that has worked out very well. We've made big progress and are not getting the complaints that we used to get. We started out by budgeting this at $250,000, and then we decided last year to raise it to $325,000, and that's when we went ahead and put the after-hours duties in it. Contract's working very well. Cook Contracting has had it for the last couple of years and done a great job. The only issue that is with this bid is that Cook wasn't actually the lowest bid. It was Utilicore, and Utilicore is actually the one on the next agenda item to do the sewer work. Cook and Utilicore, we visited with both of them, and both of them are stronger in each area. Cook is stronger in the water. Utilicore is stronger in the sanitary sewer side. So the two contractors were agreeable, so what we've decided is we were going to go with best bid. So we recommend best bid to Cook Consulting for this water maintenance contract, and I'll answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Any questions for Mr. Stewart?
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes. Item number one passes. Item number two, please.
Consider approval to authorize the city manager or his designee to negotiate and execute a contract between the City of Muskogee and Utilicore Municipal Solutions Incorporated for Muskogee Sanitary Sewer Leak Repair Maintenance in an amount not to exceed $250,000 or take other necessary action.
Mr. Stewart.
Yeah, this is the sanitary sewer side of the emergency contract for the upcoming year, and one of the things I failed to mention in the last one, this is funded through the MMA or the municipal authority, and that's why it's on this agenda. But this is the emergency contract for the sanitary sewer side. This is Utilicore, which is a new company that we haven't worked with in the past, but we did check their references, and they check out. Ronnie Boswell is the vice president, and his son Cole is the president and will be doing all the work and has all the appropriate licensures, even though they're from a different state, he's working to get those transferred. But with what we have, they're quite capable to do the job. We feel confident in it. We do recommend approval, and I'll answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Stewart? You have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes. Item number two passes. Item number three, please.
Consider approval of the lowest and best bid from Cook Consulting LLC for the Canterbury Storm Sewer Replacement Project, number 2022005, in the amount of $421,202.24, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Stewart.
Yes, so over on Canterbury Street in the 33,000 block, we've had a terrible issue with a storm sewer over there that has continually failed and caused sinkholes in the yards. This is a large pipe. The measurements on it are 55 inches by 73, which means it's actually like a squashed pipe or an arch pipe is what we call it. Quite large pipe. The bottom is completely gone out of it, which is causing the failure. We've tried several ways to fix it unsuccessfully, and it continues to have these large sinkholes. So we determined that it has to be replaced. We're talking about replacing 400 feet of this 55 by 73-inch pipe on Canterbury in the 3,000 block, and we're also talking about replacing 175 feet roughly over on Golf Lane. This is going to require four driveways to also be replaced. There is an itemized list of the repairs that was put in your packet. These do check out price-wise. Cook is the only one that bid on this project, although we had several at our pre-bid conference. But we are comfortable with the price. We're confident it's at $421. We also put a letter in your packet from Greg Armstrong, who's the engineer, that recommends we go ahead and award this to Cook. Cook has done many of these projects for us all over town, and we're very confident he can get it done. This project at $421,000 is going to be funded through the remainder of a loan that we had when we built the two big detention ponds. Ivory, that's the one that you went overlooked at. We actually went and borrowed a little over $3 million, and when the projects were done, they came in at about $2.5 million. So we have the money left to appropriate toward this project. So we do recommend approval, and I'll answer any of your questions.
Questions for Mr. Stewart?
Move for approval.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes. Item number three passes, and that is our final item for the MMA. We will now call to order the Muskogee City Council Meeting for June 27, 2022. Roll call, please.
Mayor Marlin Coleman. Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Ivory Van.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Alex Reynolds.
Here.
Stephanie Jones.
Here.
Tracy McGee.
Here.
Tracy Hoos.
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes. At this time, we will have the approval of our minutes for a special call meeting for June 6, as well as our regular city council meeting for June 13. Any corrections or additions to our minutes?
Move for approval.
Second. Have a motion and a second to approve our minutes. Final discussion. Roll call, please.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes. We didn't meet last week, so there's no consent agenda, so we got to go all the way through. So with that being said, regular agenda item number one.
Consider approval of Resolution Number 2908 declaring a parcel of property, more particularly described in the resolution, as surplus to the needs of the city, and authorize the conveyance of said property or take other necessary action.
Bow and hammer.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, everyone.
There was an application filed by Salvador Vasquez Herrera for surplus property. His address is 412 Elmira Street, and this is for a lot next to it. Next to his property, he wants to expand. Oh, no, I can't do this clicker.
Left and right.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. This is where his property is located, and you can see the vacant lot next to it in the square or the rectangle. This was filed, and he did pay the $363 minimum cost. The property was posted. There were no other bids, and staff would recommend approval. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Move for approval.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any final discussion? Roll call, please.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes. Item number one passes. Item number two.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Discuss and take action on the request from Ricky Ballard for a specific use permit for a medical marijuana dispensary located at 715 East Side Boulevard, or take other necessary action.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. This was an application filed for a specific use permit for dispensary. This property, this originally went through the Board of Adjustments. They required that this gentleman have a parking lot. He hasn't put in the parking lot. The procedure has changed, so it doesn't go back to the Board of Adjustments at this point. Planning Commission did approve this, and I've got some slides to show you where the property is located. It's highlighted in yellow, and the frontage of that road on both sides is all zoned commercial. And these are some more shots. And this is the parking lot they've put in, just shots from different angles. There's a fence along the back that's constructed of posts, which does meet the requirements. It does not have to be privacy screened per the ordinance because there's an alley behind the property, which makes him exempt from screening. There's a vacant house next door. It's been vacant apparently for years, but that is also zoned commercial. That house predated the zoning. And you can see in the area, if you look down, it's the first full block, the second block where you see the C1. That is the block where he is in that center area. And again, that's all zoned commercial on both sides of the street. Planning Commission did approve this on June 21, and staff recommends approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Ms. Mayor, we recognize?
Yes.
It's only going to be a dispensary? Nothing that has to do with the inner-girlhouse, right?
Yes, sir.
Just want a good understanding on that.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That is correct.
Thank you. Now flow back over to you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions? Have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve this agenda item. Any final discussion? Roll call, please.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes. Item number two passes. Item number three, please.
Consider approval of Resolution Number 2902 authorizing the continuation of the account fund for the City of Muskogee entitled "Solid Waste Improvements" and designating the manner in which the set account shall be operated for the upcoming fiscal year 2022, 2023, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Stewart.
Yes, Mr. Rigney is actually going to address this issue for us.
Thank you.
This resolution addresses the funding for new equipment and maintenance to our sanitation system. It brings in approximately $370,000. Yeah, $370,000 per year, and that's used to purchase things like new carts or new equipment or route ware, which we purchased last year, which has been very successful so far. Staff would like to recommend approval.
Thank you. Any questions?
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve this agenda item. Any final discussion? Roll call, please.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes. Item number three passes. Item number four, please.
Consider approval of the following lowest and best bids. A, number two, cover material, APAC OK Quarry, $12 to $16 per ton. B, aggregate Youngman Rock, $9.95 per ton. C, three-inch pit run, excuse me, Youngman Rock, $12 per ton. D, asphalt sand, Arcola Sand and Gravel Muskogee, $9.75 per ton. E, fill sand, Arcola Sand and Gravel Muskogee, $9.75 per ton. F, concrete type S3 and S4, Youngman Rock, alternate number one, location Porter, Oklahoma, $70.95 per ton. Alternate number two, delivered to stockpile, $9.70 per ton. Alternate number three, delivered to job site, $12.80 per ton. G, hot-cold patching material, Tulsa Asphalt, alternate number one, location Tulsa, Oklahoma, $92 per ton. Alternate number two, delivered to Material Yard, $106 per ton. H, 12-inch pit run, Youngman Rock, $6.95 per ton. And I, limestone screening, APAC OK Quarry, $13.25 per ton, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Stewart.
Mr. Reeves is going to address this one.
This was an annual bid for street materials for the street department. What we found on this, it said asphalt or concrete, S3 and S4, that's actually asphalt. The next item will be concrete. The prices have increased approximately 6% to 9% for this, which should be in tolerance for materials at this time. So we do recommend approval, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
Move for approval.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes. Item number four passes. Item number five.
Consider approval of the lowest bid to Twin Cities Ready Mix for concrete materials as follows. A, 3,500 PSI concrete at $115 per cubic yard. B, 3,500 PSI high early strength concrete at $124 per cubic yard. C, 3,000 PSI concrete at $112 per cubic yard. D, flow fill concrete at $104 per cubic yard. And E, city pejray at $120, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Stewart.
This is the annual bid for road repairs for concrete materials for the Public Works Department and the Street Department. What we found on this was approximate increase of about 9% for the concrete. It says 5%, but it's actually 9%. And staff does recommend approval, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Move for approval.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes. Item number five passes. Item number six, please.
Consider approval of the lowest and best bid for Macintosh Service LLC as the City of Muskogee Plumbing Contractor for maintenance and upkeep of all city facilities and buildings, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Stewart.
Mr. Thompson is going to address this one.
All right.
Evening, Deputy Mayor, Council. Bids were advertised and received by two contractors, Macintosh Service LLC and Roto-Rooter, with Macintosh Corporation being the lowest best bid. Plumbing contractor is responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of the plumbing with all city facilities and buildings. Macintosh bids were as follows. Supplies and materials markup was 20%. Contractor hourly rate is $90. Apprentice hourly rate is $65, and journeyman hourly rate is $90. Response times, four hours for emergency calls and two days for a normal situation. Recommend approval. Be happy to answer any questions.
Now, you did say all facilities.
All city-owned facilities. Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions?
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes. Item number six passes. Item number seven, please.
Consider approval of change order number one for Muskogee Interconnects Package B in the amount of $62,450.50, and to increase completion time by an additional 45 days, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Stewart.
Mr. Reeves is going to do this one.
All right.
As you recall, the B waterline package was a replacement of water lines that are basically east of York between and west of County Country Club. And these lines were basically 8-inch to 12-inch in size. The change order is related to additional materials that was required to finish the project. Staff did verify these materials. The cost of the change order, which will be the only change order related to this project, was less than 5% of the total amount of the bid, which we found to be acceptable. And staff does recommend approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Well, I did read the letter that Cook sent over, so this is the job that we just pull off of, come back to, pretty much.
Well, this is a job that the water lines were basically all over the place. So there was not an exact area where they were working at to continue from one end to the other. So they were repairing it. They had one crew that actually replaced the line. They had another crew that basically backfilled, another crew that did the sod for us. So the timeline, as far as the total contract was concerned, was extended by 45 days. But due to the fact that the materials changed on the job and the engineer didn't know exactly what materials were going to be entailed because of the age of the lines, we found that would be okay.
Thank you, sir. Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve this item. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes. Item number seven passes. Item number eight.
Consider approval of payment of $8,040 to Green Country Landscaping for contract azalea replacement work, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Ewan.
Good evening, everybody. In 2014, February, 2014, in 2021, February 2021, we had temperatures minus 14 degrees. And at that time, I had reported to you guys that we had probably 2,500 to 3,000 azaleas that were killed out in Honor Heights Park, and that in the coming fall that we were going to begin a project to replace those azaleas. And that project started in November of '21. And our estimate of 3,000 plants was what we worked on. And the funding source for the replacement of this project, which included not just replacing plants, but actually going in, pulling out the old dirt, putting in new compost, new organic matter, new soil, fertilizers, et cetera. And so the funding for this project comes from Park Development Fund, which is a non-tax based funding source. And so as the project progressed, as it got closer to the end, we realized that we had, instead of between 25 and 3,000, we had 4,000-plus dead azaleas out there. And so in an effort to push the project through, to get ready for the tourists to come in, we realized that we overspent. And so I am here tonight asking for approval for an extra $8,040 to be paid to Green Country Landscape.
Thank you. Any questions?
So that's the exact amount we overspent?
Yes, that is correct.
Have a motion?
Move for approval.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yep.
Stephanie, excuse me, Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes. Item number eight passes. Item number nine, please.
Consider approval to reject all bids on the Hat Box Concession Improvements and direct staff to rebid the project based upon a new scope of work, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Wilkinson.
Council members, we put this project out to bid some time back. We were a little optimistic that we could do more than what we could afford to do. We were planning to renovate the restroom at one of the baseball, at the baseball complex, one of the concession stand restrooms. We hoped to renovate it. We're going to add a large amount of concrete surfacing out there. Anyway, we had three hundred and thirty, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars to spend, and our bids came in at five hundred and twenty thousand dollars. We only had two bidders. We're going to work with the architect to narrow down the scope of what we can do with the amount of money that we have. So we're going to try to get it out to rebid quickly and, and, and get this project, at least some, some type of project anyway. So we, we need to reject the bids though first, so we can proceed.
Thank you. Any questions?
Move for approval?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to reject the bids on this item. Roll call, please.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes, item number nine passes. Item number ten, please.
Consider approval of nine agreements with the following wholesale water users: Rural Water District Number One, Rural Water District Number Two, Rural Water District Number Five, Rural Water District Number Six, Rural Water District Number Nine, Haskell Public Works Authority, OK Public Works Authority, Porter Public Works Authority, and TAF Public Works Authority, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Tucker?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, members of the council, these are our standard rural water and, or, excuse me, our wholesale water contracts that we renew every two years. With regard to the wholesale water customers that are listed, all of the requests for water that they have had over the past two years have remained the same, with the exception of Rural Water Five, Rural Water District Five, who has requested an additional five hundred and fifty-four units, which is about four hundred thousand gallons. And that need on their part was as a result of anticipated growth in the area, both commercial and residential. And so the standard agreement that we have reviewed for the last few years has not changed. And so we are recommending approval, and happy to answer any questions.
Move for approval?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve this agenda item. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes, item number ten passes. Item number eleven, please.
Consider approval of an amended agreement between the City of Muskogee, Muskogee Nonprofit Resource Center, St. Francis Health System, and Drop Bike Corporation, DBA Drop Mobility, which creates a public bike share program for local residents, visitors, and Muskogee County residents, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Tucker?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, members of the council, I'm going to turn the better part of this over to Kevin Anthes, who's going to speak on this. I will tell you that this is an agreement, the original of which you have seen before and approved, relating to a bike share program. The difference between that contract and the reason why we have the amendment on for you today is twofold. One, it has to do with different partners. Number two, it has to do with the change from manual bicycles, they may be called something else, and electric bicycles. And that was a determined, that was recommended by Parks, I believe, and run through the Muskogee Wellness Initiative, in order to facilitate that. This is a three-party agreement with the city, Neighbors Building Neighborhoods, and St. Francis Health System. St. Francis has donated the funds to fund the bicycle acquisition and the first year of the program. Neighbors Building Neighborhood is the fiscal mechanism to which receive the funding and will be making the purchase of the bicycles. Those bicycles will then immediately be gifted to the city, and then we will run the program after that. So if you have any other specific comments that you'd like to make, Mr. Anthes?
Sure, and one extra comment to start is that on the actual attachment to the agenda, there were some corrections that needed to be made to the budget items, so I have some to hand out for the updated exhibits. So, thank you Deputy Mayor and members of the council. Mr. Tucker really summed it up pretty well. He, you know, explained some of the main changes, is that we are moving from a standard bike to an electric bike, and that was, you know, the reasons behind that were that it was more of a, kind of a novelty that attracted more people to the program, that the electric bike systems saw more usage. And so that was, that was one of the reasons that we wanted to make that change. And then the change to the different company, it's from a company called B Cycle to the company called Drop Cycle or Drop Mobility. We just had several issues over the course. We received the funds last year, and, you know, had several issues with availability of product, or, you know, ability to return red line documents after they had been forwarded on to the previous company. And so due to that, the Wellness Initiative did vote to pursue other options. And so that's what we've landed on here today with Drop Mobility. You will notice that in the updated exhibits I just handed out, the, the change is that the new updated budget is in there, that is still within the total amount that St. Francis did donate, so we're still within budget there. We did remove one of the eight original bikes, reduced it to seven in order to get the project started. And so as Mr. Tucker mentioned, it's been approved before, so I'd like to recommend approval this evening, and happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Move for approval?
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second to approve this agenda item?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, and that motion and second will be to approve the, yes, with the amendments, with the amended budget and whatnot.
All right.
I had a question. Can you kind of refresh your memory as to what this is? I mean, help me out a little bit?
Sure. So the, the general idea is that this is a bike share program that is to be stationed at Depot Green. That's on, on the, the back page of the Exhibit C. That location, there's a concrete pad already over there located by the, kind of covered pavilion area. And basically, it will be a, a charge-based system that people will be able to rent these bikes and use on the trails. So they will be a central hub located there at that location. They'll be able to scan, so there's not a kiosk with this updated system, it's just, it's all mobile. So they'll be able to scan a code, set up the account on their phone, and then rent the bike right there. And they can either, you know, do that. There is the option that if somebody has an issue with, you know, access to a phone or something, we can set up an opportunity for them to do a different payment option at a, at a designated location. But for the most part, we'll be doing kind of mobile access. And then it's a GPS tracker on, on the bike and on the system, so that hub will be where everything's, has to be returned to, in order to be finished with your, with your ride.
So it's basically for the trail?
Yes, for the trail system, and downtown, you know, with, with the addition of all the bike lanes downtown.
Thank you.
Now-
Do we know the cost of this yet?
Uh, so the total costs of this-
Not of the program, but what it's going to cost the residents to rent the bike?
Yes, so there was a suggested, from the Drop Mobility Company, and they, they kind of had a, a setup of suggested cost, but it was, you know, something similar to, along the lines of, you know, to, to start, one dollar to start. I, I don't actually have the numbers with me presently, but I can get them to you. But it was something similar along the lines, one dollar to start, and then ten cents a minute, twenty-five cents a minute kind of thing after that, or, you know, ten dollars for the whole day, depending on how you wanted to make the purchase. So they, they would have options.
They would have options. Thank you, sir.
Yep.
And this is not replacing the scooters, this is in addition to?
Right, this is, yeah, not, not related to the scooters, but, you know, in, in addition to, yes.
All right. I'm going to have to, have to teach Ivory Van how to ride a bike.
Electric bike, electric bike.
Electric bike, yeah. That ought to be easy for him. He's, he's a hard learner.
Will these be available anywhere else, other than at Depot Green?
Uh, presently, no, no, that'll, that'll be kind of the, the start of the program. Hopefully, it's successful, and people like it, and then we can add other hubs for the bikes.
All right. Yes, go ahead.
Now, on these riding these bikes, like on the scooters, they go to a certain area, they're supposed to shut down. Now, you said it's for the whole trail, the entire trail around the city, right?
Yes.
How about the new part where it goes out there about K, I mean, OK Mark? Can you go out that way on it? I mean-
So you're talking about north of town?
Right.
Beyond Kmart? Uh, we can set the, you know, geo-location, and it can be a radius, or it can be up to a certain street. So if that's, if there's a desire to be able to access all parts of the trails, yeah, we, we can geolocate the, the border of, of the area that they can go.
But if you go outside that area, they're shut down, looks like the scooters. Like say, if I want to go to York Street.
Mm-hmm.
Can't go to York Street, right?
Right, if, if that's the boundary that's set.
Okay. I was just curious on that. And I definitely, I like the part of it being electric. I can ride a bike a little bit. I mean, I, I can ride a bike, but I like the electric power, I don't do no work.
Yeah, electric assist, right? So it helps you out up to a certain point.
Yeah, you know, in my, in my young age, I done kind of got, kind of, you know, kind of got lazy a little bit. Not just a little bit now, you know? But I'm glad, I'm glad it's electric, though. Deputy Mayor, I think we all up here need to ride together. Attorney, Deputy Court-
He admitted, we, I didn't do it. He admitted he's lazy, but he, he admitted that.
Counselor Van, don't forget there's only seven of them.
Oh, there's only seven of them? We got two councilmen up here who want to ride the hard way. You too, Roy.
All right, this is a good deal. We do have a motion. All right, we're ready to vote. Any other questions? That's well, roll call, please.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes, item number eleven passes. Item number twelve, please.
Receive presentation and consider the approval of a contract between the City of Muskogee and the Muskogee Area Arts Council to support programming that furthers the arts in Muskogee, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Tucker?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, members of the council, we received a notice earlier this afternoon that the speaker, who was intending to present, would not be able to attend tonight. She did provide a copy of their most recent expense sheet, and so I'm happy to pass that out. But as many of you know, the Muskogee Area Arts Council has been funded by the city for many, many years. And historically, it was a match grant that was matched with funding that was received from the state arts council. However, as many of the funds that are allocated by the state happen, those were, those ultimately dried up. And so as a result, the Muskogee Area Arts Council has served the community with only the city's contribution, which is anticipated to be the same as it has in prior years, of ten thousand dollars. Some of the things that the arts council has done in the past, they fund programs at the youth camp for Muskogee Little Theater, they sponsor the Muskogee Songwriters Contest, they do funding for the Bare Bones Film Festival, they've been doing funding for the Bass Reeves statue, and they do, they're, they're effectively a seed organization. And so their idea is, of course, to gather ideas and facilitate kind of first-run arts programming. And so the, for example, the very successful songwriters contest was originated by the arts council. And then once that was done, and, and we had a good turnout, it was then transferred to another agency to run. And so the whole point of the arts council is to sponsor ideas that further arts within the community. Many of your favorite council members in the past have served on this board. I have served on the Muskogee Arts Council Board. It's been about ten years, but I did serve, and they do a lot of good work. And so I recognize the, the difficult decision since our speaker was not able to be here tonight. And so it is up to you all whether you want to approve this contract, which is the same as it has been in the past, or if you want to take action to table this to the next meeting, and we can take efforts to try to get a speaker here to give you more details of the, the recent activity.
Thank you. Do we want to move forward or?
I move for approval.
We have a second?
Second, yep.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I would just like to see the presentation, Roy, if she can get us something, and you can kind of send it to us.
Yeah, I will certainly ask her for her presentation and a list of current activities that were funded for this past fiscal year.
Appreciate it.
Okay, we do have a motion to move forward. Roll call, please.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes, item number twelve passes. We do have one citizen that signed up to speak, Ms. Pat Cassiker. If you could take the stand at this time, give us your name and address. You have three minutes to discuss your agenda item, your item.
I would like to request five minutes. I may not need all of the five minutes, but in case.
For the pleasure of the council.
I'll make a motion to give her five minutes.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to extend it to five minutes. Roll call, please.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes, if you give us your address, you'll have five minutes.
My name is Patricia Cassica. I live at five thousand three, Oklahoma. The city council of Muskogee is a two-tiered government. There's one government for the special interest groups with full pocketbooks, and there's one for the rest of the citizens in Muskogee. This socialistic rhetoric and leftist propaganda tactics you are feeding to the hard-working conservative citizens, and this city needs to stop. God-fearing citizens who worship the Lord Jesus in spirit and in truth are not fooled by your tactics. We are tired, tired of being assaulted by lies and political rhetoric, having red herrings thrown at us, and even gaslighting the citizens who speak out about the wrongdoings in this city. It takes a great deal of energy to manipulate Muskogee citizens, so why not put that energy into resolving the social and economic problems that would make the ci, the city a better one? As stated in a previous council meeting, the city of Muskogee belongs to all of the people, as stated in the U.S. Constitution. The citizens elected this council to improve the quality of life in Muskogee. However, in the following statements, which are facts, not opinions, show how the quality of life in Muskogee is declining. First of all, the old post office at five twenty-five West Altmoggy is a marijuana grow farm. It is owned by Shaw and Jen Lynn from California since 2020. The annual property taxes went from ten thousand to one thousand nine eighty-four. This information is public record, attainable by anyone. This unmarked business is operating in a historical and tourist area. They have been fined numerous times regarding the odor and toxins coming from this building, but they continue to ignore the law. The city ordinance states that a ventilation system must be one where odors cannot be detected off premises. They have been in operation for two years without complying with inspector codes. City council has had two years to resolve the issues with this business, and yet problems still exist. The entire blame for this situation lies with the city council, who are pro-marijuana. The council created a public nuisance at five twenty-five West Altmoggy, which is a violation of the city ordinance. I cited this fact several times in previous council meetings. Presently, the ci, the council is working on adding another seventy-five to a hundred public nuisances throughout Muskogee, many in residential areas. This is a prime example of a two-tiered government, where out-of-state and international individuals are priority, and Muskogee citizens are last. Several examples that Muskogee citizens are not priority, and the quality of life issues are not important, has been cited in the council meetings, which are recorded. Some examples are: May the third, Rita Espinoza complained about six hours of loud music with profanity at a downtown event where a musician threw bags at marijuana in, at the crowd. February fourteenth, Marcelo Marshall complained for ten years about a neighbor who moved his mobile home to city property, and threatened her family and other neighbors with children with a gun if they trespassed on this property. March the eighth, Pastor Larry Smith, Macedonian Baptist Church, was denied the right to have a marijuana dispensary located away from his church. This decision was made at a board of adjustment meeting. June sixth, Pastor Gregory Fields complained of a halfway house across the street from him, which is a public nuisance and a violation of the specific use permit. He asked the city council to do something about this problem. Lastly, there's me. I've spoken out against a marijuana dispensary in my neighborhood since September twenty twenty-one. I have spoken ten times, including tonight, about the quality of life issues and how it affects neighborhoods. I have cited the city ordinances each time I came before this council. You have amended and amended the public nuisance ordinances, code enforcement regulations, and the ethics committee ordinances. This council knows it is in violation of ordinances pertaining to marijuana, and is busy rewriting them for your protection, for their protection, not at the best interest of the citizens. It should be for the citizens' quality of life. That is why Muskogee City Council is a two-tiered government. And I would like to ask the city attorney, why hasn't something been done in two years about the old post office?
I'm sorry, there, there's no question-answer period during public comment.
Well, I'm asking, and a lot of people are asking, and they want to know.
Ms. Cassica, thank you for your comments. Your time is up. This time, we will move on to item number thirteen.
Consider an executive session to discuss and take possible action on the following: A pursuant to Section 307B2 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss negotiations with the International Association of Firefighters, Local Number Fifty-seven, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. B pursuant to Section 307B2 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss negotiations with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Local Number Twenty-four Sixty-five, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session.
Have a motion to go into executive session?
Move for approval?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Jones.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes, we would now consider ourselves in executive session, if you could excuse us at this time.
Give out the chips and-
We are now returning from our executive session. Roll call, please.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Ivory Van.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Alex Reynolds.
Here.
Stephanie Jones.
Here.
Tracy McGee.
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
All right, Mr. Tucker?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Item thirteen A pursuant to Section 307B2 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, the council did convene an executive session to discuss ongoing negotiations with the International Association of Firefighters, Local Number Fifty-seven. After being briefed on the status of those negotiations, I think an appropriate motion would be to approve a memorandum of understanding extending the provisions of the 2021-2022 collective bargaining agreement with the International Association of Firefighters, Local Number Fifty-seven, until the earlier of June thirtieth, 2023, or until a new collective bargaining agreement is negotiated and executed.
Thank you. We have a motion.[1720.22]